Well, hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murriman of people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, the land and the waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday the 10th of November two thousand and twenty five. This meeting has been broadcast live on YouTube. What is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is link to agenda papers on council's website. Item two, apologies. We have one for councillor Daniel Hume, who has leave of absence, and I expect councillor James to join us shortly. Item three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associate. Are there any declarations? Councillor Kennedy?
Yeah, item eight point four point one.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Thank you both very much. There being no others, we now head into our omnibus items. Item four, four point one, the confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the twentieth of October two thousand and twenty five have been circulated. Are there any matters arising? There being none, we now move into mayors' communications. The first one being my diary from the twenty first of October to the tenth of November to today. That's been circulated, and I'd like to thank councillor Hume, who represented me at an event. As colleagues will also note from my diary, I represented the city at the two thousand and twenty five Tasmanian Tourism Awards Gala, and I'm delighted to share that Mr Jason Leonard and Miss Alice Eddington of Aquila Eco Retreat in Richmond realised success, being awarded gold in two categories, eco-tourism and unique accommodation. I'm also pleased to share that Miss Christie Booth-Lark of Calara Distillery also in Richmond won gold in the Tourism Distilleries and Breweries Award category. So to Jason, Alice and Christie, it's always pleasing to see hard work and dedication rewarded, and on behalf of the city, I wrote to congratulate them and I tabled copies of those letters. Thank you, CEO. Colleagues, I'm also pleased to report that the Coal River Valley continues to shine, within winning Rainier Roberts, a Riversdale Estate, winning the best Tasmanian Surah trophy, with the Riversdale Estate Surah two thousand and twenty three at the recent two thousand and twenty five Australian Shraz Challenge. I'll table a copy of my letter to the Roberts family, congratulating them on this most recent accolade. Along with councillor Hume, I attended the South Arm Peninsula Residents' Association Annual General Meeting last month, and I'm delighted to report this strong community group continues to serve the peninsula well, and it was, as always, a wonderful opportunity to hear of all the activities occurring in this special part of our city. Congratulations and thank you to all the hard-working committee members of SAPRA, particularly the re-elected President Kerry Scamper, who is such a passionate and effective advocate for the community. And I'll table a copy of SAPRA's annual report. Thank you, sir, yeah. Moving now on to four point three, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. Four point four, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions?
Um, no.
Thank you, sir, yeah. We now move to four point five, reports from outside bodies. The first would be the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority, councillor Walker.
Nothing to report other than the AGM slides.
Thank you, councillor Walker. And Tasway South, councillor Warren. Thank you, councillor Warren. Moving on to Tas Water Corporation. As flagged at our last meeting, I attended the Tas Water General Meeting on the twenty ninth of October, and I tabled a copy of their annual report for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five. Thank you, CEO. The Greater Hobart Committee meeting has yet to be arranged. I can report the Greater Hobart Mayors meeting this Wednesday. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, the Audit Panel Chairperson's report, as listed in the agenda, as well as the Cultural Creative Advisory Committee. Are there any other reports for tabling? Councillor Chong, please.
Thank you, Councillor Chong.
Table the September minutes of the Richmond Advisory.
Thank you very much. Anything else to table? Moving now on to the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the twentieth and twenty seventh of October and the third of November two thousand and twenty five have been circulated. Are there any matters arising? Well, colleagues, I know that we're now at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Oh, thank you councillor Goine, and a second, and thank you councillor Hunter. All those in favour? That's it. Sorry. All right, those against? You abstaining, councillor Warren? All right, abstention from councillor Warren. That's so passed. Item five, public question time. There are no questions on notice. There's an answer to previous questions taken on notice. Mrs Marsh, as listed in the agenda. Are there any questions without notice this evening from the gallery? Mr Marsh. Sorry, Mrs Marsh, Mr Marsh, please.
Thank you. Victor Marsh from the Bluff. On behalf of the people who attended the guided tour of Rosy Parklands, November the second, I'd like to thank the two council officers for their professionalism and informative answers to our questions. My question is, is this council going to do an ecological assessment on Charlesham Memorial Park and Rosy Parklands to support the work of these officers?
Thank you, Mr Marsh. Sir, yeah, please.
Thank you. I'll take that one on notice, may.
Thank you. Mrs Marsh.
John Marsh Belreve. Every day, the local Belreve Bluff community bear the brunt of illegal and nuisance parking due to the increasing number of retailers, events and services, including the ferry service in this geographically restricted area. Would council please provide a summary of the infringements, fines were issued for during the November the second cricket game at Belreve Oval, and the nature of any complaints made to the parking management team before eight P M?
Thank you, Mrs Marsh. Again, we'll take that one on notice and provide an answer in the in the minutes of this meeting. Item six, deputation by members of the public. So are there any deput-- oh, sorry, sorry. Please. Yes, indeed.
David Carr from Tranmere. The duty points structure plan. Does anyone know what's going on? Will it ever come to a conclusion?
Thank you, Mr Carr. All right, Mr Marsh.
Through you, may. Thank you, Mr Carr, for the question. Yes, I know what's going on. As I said to, in response to councillor Mulder at last council meeting, we are still working through some contractual matters with the consultants, and I hope to be progressing that very shortly. In response to the second half of your question, yes, it will come to a conclusion. The-- we're still trying to determine an appropriate schedule based upon the additional work we've requested of the consultants.
Thank you, Mr Marsh. Moving now on to item six, deputations. So are there any deputations this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving now on to item seven, the planning authority matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety three. Seven point one, which is a planning application for twelve River Street Belreve, two multiple dwellings, one existing and one new. Is there a mover for the recommendation, please? We need a mover to get on the books. Thank you, councillor Mulder. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Hunter. Councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the motion as it stands. I recommend it for approval, although I do have a few concerns. I don't think they're sufficient to warrant an alternative recommendation. And as always, the process is that if if we aren't able to make sufficient grounds, then of course, it's opened up to the representatives indeed to appeal council's decision, and and who knows, with a bit more time than I had, they may be able to come up with something. My only really concern is about the parking arrangements and the and the fact that by creating a second entrance, we're reducing two parking spaces, and that the traffic flow and management in the area with the extra cars, you know, might mean that they may be required. So it's already identified that visitor parking is on the street. Now, in my discussions with some of the the representatives, I first have to point out that this is the fact, the problem is when you decide that you're going to increase the density in what were less than residential areas. And the big argument is, oh, yes, we can use the existing services and the infrastructure to service more houses because it already exists. Yet does it have, yet it already exists, but does it have the capacity to increase the new workload and and things? Now, these things are national policies, they are state government planning policies, and we're heading down that road. So really, all we can do is try to point out that, you know, some of those areas, and I go back to my hobby horse about Bly Street, you know, it's a nice, big, wide street, and it used to be great. And then we increased the density, and now there's more, so much parking on this Bly Street, which was actually originally intended to replace Cambridge Road, there's so much parking on it, that you're troubling at any time of the day to be driving up that and not have to give way to oncoming traffic because there isn't sufficient width for cars to pass. So if you're going to go into this high-density thing, we really do need to start thinking about how wide the streets are to be, how, you know, and how the traffic flow, and how we're going to increase the density. And the same applies to the water and the storm and the stormwater and the sewerage, because the more you put in, the greater the drain on the infrastructure. And to assume that what we built in the nineteen sixties for quarter-acre blocks is sufficient to do it for the future is a real problem. And and it's on those bases, but those are well beyond planning grounds that I think I could argue are the policy settings to to bring forward. But so, you know, I think we should recommend it for approval and at least give some people some chance to maybe look into some of the issues.
Councillor Hunter.
I think councillor Mulder summed it up pretty succinctly. Thank you, councillor Mulder. I understand that some nearby neighbours have some concerns which have been outlined in the report. Unfortunately, the planning scheme doesn't take that into consideration, so there's not much that we can do. So, yeah, I recommend this for approval.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's quite a lot about this proposal that I actually don't like, and unfortunately, like councillor Mulder, I've also found it difficult to be able to find sufficient grounds to mount a refusal, or I most assuredly would have, if I possibly could have. As councillor Mulder rightly says, that doesn't preclude, of course, representatives continuing to make grounds for appeal should they choose to do so. If this is successful this evening, I would like to thank the representatives who put forward what I thought were very well thought out and set out representations detailing their concerns about this particular proposal. I don't need to go over the ground of my concerns around the lack of tools for us to deal with matters. I don't think the scheme always lends us to a pathway that delivers what I would call good planning outcomes. Unfortunately, that's just the mechanisms of the scheme that we work under. I would say I am greatly looking forward to seeing the work delivered on the housing policy that council set aside funding, because this hodgepodge approach to infill development anywhere and everywhere, seeing every backyard developed on, has troubled me greatly for some time. I really think we need to be working on that as assiduously and carefully as we can, provide guidance on this sort of thing in the future, because it is leading to very unhappy outcomes in communities where it shouldn't necessarily be that way. So looking forward to seeing that work come through at the initiative of council, and as always, state government tools not sufficient, reluctantly supporting the recommendation.
Anyone else wishing to make a contribution to this item? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, certain developments will come up, and we get representations. I think there might not have been many representations that were directly sent to us, but I think the calibre of them, you know, showed a lot of thought had gone into them, did demonstrate the impacts on their area, and sometimes directly on their own dwelling, and on planning, on good planning grounds, or perhaps previous planning schemes, this is likely to have been recommended for refusal. Some of the reasons on good planning grounds would have been along the lines of the the fact that we are introducing, as was mentioned, an extra crossover to the street. So two less car parks, one extra crossover, more more potential for conflict. To what end? We've, we see other infill developments, and they're done in such a way that, again, no, no, no change with crossovers, and there are things that could be done, you know, around the impact. But we're not assessing it on generic planning grounds or concepts that you might look at around the globe. We're assessing it under a planning scheme, the planning scheme rather. And it's important to note that there needs to be credible grounds for refusal using the criteria under the planning scheme in which you assess developments. Under the planning scheme that we operate under, I couldn't see those grounds there. I thought that if anyone else would have had them, then what happens, as we normally see in other council meetings when people believe there are grounds, a refusal motion is drafted and circulated. No refusal motion or draft of one has been circulated amongst us, by us, because I think when people are looking over those grounds, they're seeing there aren't reasons for refusal. So it's, it's, it's largely compliant using the elements and criteria that it can be assessed under, and as such, that is the reason why I'll be voting for this proposal.
Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder?
As per the officer's recommendation.
Excuse me. Thank you. All right. Well, I'll put the the motion, that is for the DAB approved, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. I now advise that council concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety three. Moving on to item eight, reports of officers, moving down to eight point two point one, Little Harrow Beach Master Plan two thousand and twenty five for adoption. Is there a mover for the recommendation, please? Deputy Mayor, thank you. And second, councillor Hunter. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm much more cheerful to be speaking to this particular recommendation, and I'm sure the community will be equally excited to see the master plan come back to council following what's been a fairly extensive consultation period, and of course, come back to council more recently in workshop. I don't need to go over over all the particulars with colleagues, but of course, this is about setting, you know, the long-term vision for Little Harrow Beach, which, in terms of expectations, we need to also be clear that this is not going to happen overnight, that this is a plan that's going to take numbers of years and successive budgets allocated over a period of time to see these works actually come to fruition. But of course, this is where we start. So it's been a very healthy exercise with the community, lots of great feedback received, and we really look forward to seeing this item come up, as it will in stages, for funding requests into the future, and to see the rubber hit the road with future development. So I'm very pleased to support the officer's recommendation and seek colleagues' support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Hunter, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It is exciting to see this finally come to council for approval, and I commend the council officers who have worked a long time on this and put a lot of effort, as well as the community members who participated in engagement. It is a very clear-to-read, easy-to-read report, which is great to see. We did receive an email earlier today from one of the concerned residents with a number of concerns, and interestingly enough, one of those concerns was around coastal hazards, where this is, this is a concept plan. A lot of that detailed work comes in the actual planning and design of each specific part of that plan, and it's great to see that a coastal hazard assessment for the project is actually being undertaken early next year. So all of that information will come to light, and council will obviously need to work through any issues around feasibility when the time comes. But again, I commend the officers for their great work and excited to see this come to life. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is the end of a process that's taken a reasonable amount of time, and I think it's been done in a fairly thorough manner. I wouldn't say methodical because methodical almost sort of is a word devoid of passion. I think the passion for this site is is demonstrated in what the plan is and the work that went into making it come along. I do also note the email that Mayor councillor Hunter referred to as well, and there are genuine issues around coastal vulnerabilities. And all one needs to do is turn to, I think it's page eleven of the map, and you can see, you know, the storm tide impacts on this area. And, you know, the footy, the, the, the photos also showed from the representative, it is a vulnerable area. I don't believe that the plan in any way makes it more vulnerable, and there is scope for further resilience if and when required. May that not be for quite some time, because, as I said, it's a treasured area. There may be some disappointment amongst some people to to understand that a very much utilised bit of green space is actually private property, not public property. And I think council will probably need to be ready to have a communication plan in place for the day when that area is fenced off and the construction trucks come through. But it is a good plan. It is the result of a thorough and and robust process, and it's nice to tick this plan off, and I hope that there's enough colleagues' support to do so.
Councillor, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a, it's a really good start, but what concerns me with these things is that the idea of some future, we'll get on with it, and we'll start to do things, and you look forward to the future budget allocations and those sorts of things. I think the problem when you drew these big master plans, and by the time we actually get to put shovels in the sand in this case, it's outdated, and we want to move on with it, and we want to do something else again. And it's one of the concerns I have with these things, because, you know, a lot of them is sort of, ah, we've got them in there, and they're quote shovel-ready for when someone wants us to promise us some money to assist us to do these things. And and the concern is that we need to make Franklin a marginal electorate, to be frank, if you want to, if you actually want to realistically think that someone's going to be throwing money at us. I mean, we've, look, look, look how many, you know, aspirational strategic projects we've got on the way or in the or in the wind. And and we know, you know, every time you get up there, the state government makes some nice noises, and the federal government makes some nice noises, but as the closer you get to the rubber hitting the road, it starts to weaken, and then, and what have we got? This wonderful plan, this wonderful vision, and and the word is, well, you pay for it, you've got plenty of money. And and so we get to think, but I'd like to see this thing so that the next time we discuss this thing, there's actually a, we're starting to put a timeline around what we're going to do, in what order we're going to do the stages, and and when we're going to do the stages, so that, you know, we can have some confidence that even if Santa Claus doesn't come around at Christmas time, we will still be delivering these basic services and and basic concepts to the people of Clarence.
Councillor Mulder, councillor Chong, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And can I start like others by commending the officers and the community that have been so involved in getting this to this stage? And I guess for me, this is the end of stage one, almost. We talk about being a master plan, and that sounds final, but this is just the start. This is setting what what kind of vision we want for this area. And it's really important as we, as we go forward through the budgeting process and all of those stages, that that we use this to keep us true to what we as council and the community decided should happen in this area. And it will change. Of course, it will change, because life changes and things change. But it's really important that we have this vision to start with.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank colleagues for their contributions and their support generally. I wholeheartedly agree. It is, it is, it is a very good starting point. It's a good document. I agree, stage one. And I also acknowledge that there, there is sometimes frustration that we don't, we aren't able to see projects start as quickly as we might like, or be delivered into the community as quickly as we might like, and that they're on the shelf waiting for funding. That's not a good reason not to be aspirational. You need to be aspirational, and you need to have the plans there to be able to go out and seek partnerships, because naturally, council can't fund everything on its own that it would like to do in the community. And I think we might see some more discussion about that a little bit later in the evening on another matter. But
But as I said, this is a wonderful start. It's a great job by the staff putting all of this together and the community feedback that's been received. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the next stage, early next year, with the coastal reporting that will be going on. So once again, I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, well, the motion for the chair is that council A notes the outcomes of community consultation for the draft Little Harrow Beach Master Plan, B adopts the Little Harrow Beach Master Plan 2025, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much colleagues. Moving now on to 8.2.2, South Arm Highway Upgrade Past Road to Oak Downs Parade Concept Plans. councillor Mulder, you have an alternate motion? amended motion or other?
An amended motion, no, I'm not alternating.
Is there a seconder? thank you councillor Walker, councillor Mulder?
The original motion was that we note the Department of State Growth's concept designed for the South Arm Highway, which I support noting. In the original motion, anyone to authorise the chief executive officer to prepare a feedback submission to the Department of State Growth covering the points. Not a problem either. My big issue with it was that in all of this, councillors already provided feedback as a result of workshops. And the State Department of State Growth hasn't even acknowledged that feedback. This is of a concern and, you know, in this day and age when, you know, collaboration between the state government and this council, the second largest council in the state, on this major highway, major feeder to half of the city, we go to the trouble of putting it all together. And to give you an idea of some of the things that we've talked about here is that the original plan was, well, the long original plan was to actually bypass this whole section at all. But there is a number of elements that I've continually raised on this issue. And that is that this particular plan has five sets of traffic lights between the Police Academy and Past Road, where there was a great opportunity to provide a overpass/underpass cloverleaf solution where Hawthorn Way and Droofy Point Road meet the South Arm Highway. That's been missed. In fact, the Department of State Growth is now recommending with the Skylands Plan that the traffic down this side actually goes up Tollard Drive of all places rather than being channeled to the South Arm Highway. We've got enough problems with Tollard Drive and stuff like that and the plan is now to challenge more traffic up there. Then you've got the intersections at Diosastra Street and Betonia Road into Rokeby. Why do you need two intersections there, one of which I think at the last time I checked needed houses demolished? Surely it's time for some common sense in these roads to reduce the number of intersections, to reduce the number of sets of traffic lights and to create feeding lanes, acceleration lanes and deceleration lanes so that traffic can merge like they do from Mornington on the Tasman Highway. We've gone away from that concept for some strange reason, yet it's the best way of keeping traffic flowing and avoiding traffic conflict. Yet we're going back down here. I must say, we've made a major transition. They've obviously run out of roundabouts in the Department of State Growth because now we see no roundabouts and we only see traffic lights. So, you know, these are the sorts of issues and the department seems to be deaf to them. And, you know, and it's really, I find it quite disrespectful of this council that they don't even bother to comment on the initial thing. If they can't comment on our initial feedback and make no changes, it's almost pointless sending this stuff to them if they're not listening. So, Mr Mayor, the only thing I can say is I think this would be part of the Greater Hobart Committee, wouldn't it? And I'd sort of urge you to, you know, do your best to facilitate the thing through that particular committee. So I move the motion.
councillor Walker?
Thank you Mayor, look, happy to endorse this. And it was noted in a previous motion, the term marginal electorate came up, which Franklin isn't. I would note that the redistribution process is underway and the first round of submissions went live on the website today. Maybe we can make comments about trying to redraw it like a porcupine or something like that. Some other councils have made some commentary in the space. But parking that to the side, let's just go to the first bit, that we as a council welcome this infrastructure. This is badly needed, noting that it's not marginal, it is planned to happen and we welcome it. The point of this motion is not to get in a tit-for-tat spat with the state government instrumentality. People will sometimes use the term councils are the level closest to the people. Now, I'm not necessarily a big fan of that as a mantra. What I would say is it is in our patch, point one. Point two, we do play a bit in the space of roads, we do, okay? So we have things that we have positive comments to make in this. This, the tenet of this motion is not to say that's terrible, blah, blah, blah. It's, we welcome this, but we are trying to take a problem-solving approach. What we want to do is to work with you now so that we don't need to do very expensive and barely feasible retrofitting in the future. That's what this motion is largely about. We welcome this, we want to keep talking with you so that the connections to the roads that we manage can be optimal. And again, that this project is as good as it can be because if that happens, if there's not cost overruns, then hopefully the momentum leads and that road section or the next section, which is from that Oak Downs roundabout through to Acton Road can be advanced and progressed because that is also sorely needed. So seek colleagues' support.
thank you councillor Walker, any other colleagues wishing to speak on this matter? councillor James, and welcome councillor James.
My apologies for my late arrival and very unforeseen unfortunately. The amended motion notes the Department of State Growth proposed concept. So we're noting it, we're not necessarily endorsing it. So there is that opportunity for our feedback to be acknowledged. Up to date, it hasn't been. There is a matter here in relation to the properties at between two and six Grange Road West. That includes the heritage-listed former Rokeby State School, public toilets and a workshop. The bypass proposed involves partial acquisition to facilitate a new highway intersection, a new driveway access point from South Arm Road and the construction of a five-space car park, partial. But then there has been a reference made on page 118 that council's preferred outcome is for the state government to acquire both sites, utilise the heritage building at 2-6 Grange Road West as a construction office. So look, that really isn't where I would like to see it end up. That is part of our heritage or the building is. And I recall back in 88 when we bought the Cunha, yeah, the artworks for and the schoolhouse from Cunha and dropped it on to the Rosney Parklands. So look, I made this comment at another time and which I said that really that beautiful heritage building, that is, as mentioned, the old or former Rokeby State School, surely we could negotiate with the Department of State Growth and see that if it can be retained or relocated. And if that was the outcome, then I think it could be a marvellous way forward. So at the moment, this motion is noting, it's not saying we adopt it. So there may be some discussion that can eventuate between the Department of State Growth and council in relation to that retention of that heritage-lister, Rokeby State School. And I have a vision that perhaps in the long term, we may be able to incorporate it within our heritage listing facility at Rosney Parklands.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution on this one? If being done, councillor Mulder, you'll write a reply, please.
Mr Mayor, as we said, we are noting and we've had an opportunity to express some concerns and hopefully they'll be noted. Just one passing thing, I found the attached diagram to be most useful in understanding the traffic patterns and the things and all the rest of it. Except I sort of wonder what the causeways have got to do with anything.
All right, I'll put the motion, that is the amended motion, seeing in the name of councillor Mulder, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. And moving now on to 8.2.3, Rokeby Park and Ride Facility Concept Plans. Call for a mover of the recommendation, please. councillor James, thank you, and second deputy mayor, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and again, this has been debated at Nozam. We've discussed it at workshops and it is probably one of the facilities, this part of an overall concept that will be, I suppose, dotted around the different municipalities over time. And of course, Rokeby Park and Ride Facility Concept Plan is the one that's now before the council. So look, rather than go into any detail, I think it's a great concept. It's going to address as part of the feeder from that area, as part of the bus network or the park and ride facility from that area into Rosney Parklands and beyond into Hobart Central, seek council support.
Thank you very much, so, Deputy Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm also pleased to support this noting motion as well. I note that we did get a response from DSG to feedback that council provided in relation to this and some points were accepted, some points were outside of their scope. But nevertheless, a more successful response in relation to this project. It would be lovely for consideration of more park and ride around some of the other infrastructure that's coming forward, such as the ferry terminals. I have a concern that there's no, currently no park and ride considerations for those particular projects at the moment, but would love to see some consideration for that. See them starting to pop up in other areas just outside our municipality such as Midway Point. So looking forward to see where this one goes as well and happy to support the recommendation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, councillor Chong?
Look, I think if we're going to deal with congestion, both in our city and into Hobart, park and ride needs to be part of that scenario, as will be ferries and a number of other things. Absolutely, I think this is a really good idea. I do note that there are a number of issues however that were raised in the submission and I think it's very important that we get this in to State Growth and make sure that all of those issues are considered, not just what they initially thought about. So I seek my colleagues' support.
thank you councillor Chong, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, park and ride is really great and it's a good idea. And this one, I was sort of thinking it might have been on the other side, but apparently they've decided to do this one. It seems they've learnt their lessons from the Kingston bypass and they've built a parking facility that doesn't require the buses to run through it. So we won't end up with that ridiculous situation where I don't think it's operating yet because they built a park and ride with a turning circle for buses that buses couldn't make. So, I mean, you know, it is laughable if it wasn't so expensive, but this of course avoids that. I have a couple of concerns here is that the major exit for the park and ride is onto Tollard Drive. You know, and it's within spitting, it's almost halfway between the Ploughman's Road, which already has trouble getting onto Tollard Drive when the traffic lights are red. And now we're going to put another park and ride facility halfway between them on the other side of the road. You know, like just how many, you know, and the biggest problem we have with this is you risk gridlock. So you end up creating a traffic jam by trying to avoid traffic jams. So that's my concern, there are other ways of doing it, but they haven't really chosen to do them. There are other exits, Morrisby Street, but then bang, that's through a residential road. And we earlier than tonight heard how Tollard Drive is going to become the main feeder from Droofy Point. Yet here we are, right at where it meets its junction with South Arm Highway. We've got all these other little connections that at particular times are going to be really congested and heavy. And I sometimes sort of wonder, no, I'm not a traffic management expert here, but I've been riding around for a fair while and I've seen a few traffic congestions. And I really think we need to take a much more strategic approach. Far too late to do it from here, maybe we can retrofit something on West Grange Road in the future. Because that would be a more sensible outcome. As far as park and ride, the deputy mayor says, oh, around the ferry terminal. No, ferry terminals are not park and ride facilities. You put parking facilities before the congestion, not afterwards. Ferries all along have all been designed to, for pedestrian, cyclist and personal mobility devices, right? So that you can get on there. If you create a major park and ride to service the ferries, what are you going to do to Clarence Street, Cambridge Road and all those other roads which are already congested by having more cars coming down them? So you've really got to be careful about what park and ride is. You build park and ride before the congestion, not after.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution to this item? Before I call on councillor James to give his right of reply, I'll enter the debate as a councillor and as a mayor, and just say that two and a half years ago, I stood near Gleep Hill Village with the former minister for Infrastructure, the honourable Michael Ferguson MP, and the minister proudly announcing that this park and ride is going to be delivered sooner rather than later. Well, we've had two elections down the track, it is very positive now to see some movement. I went to one of the public consultation sessions, feedback I received from residents there was very positive. We need this, as we all know, we're growing at a great rate of knots. Some of the points raised by all the speakers tonight have merit, particularly that we'll actually deliver a park and ride in this fast-growing area of our city. So I thank the Department of State Growth for their work and their engagement with Mr Graham and his team. But from my perspective, let's just get it done. So those few words, councillor James, you'll write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I seek council support.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much colleagues. 8.3, there are no financial management items, moving on to 8.4.1 on the governance, councillor Kennedy in Chong? Thank you. So colleagues, we move on to 8.4.1, which is the community grants and cultural and creative grants. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you Deputy Mayor, is there a seconder? councillor Hunter, thank you, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this is obviously a pleasurable part of our role to approve grants for applicants that have come forward as part of this particular grant round. I would like to thank the council staff for the hard work that goes into assessing the applications. I know it's a very difficult job to wade through those and disseminate through who will be successful applicants and who may miss out. Never an easy thing to do when there are so many quality applications to go through. But nevertheless, I thank them for undertaking that work and making the recommendations that are before us and seek colleagues' support.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, councillor Hunter?
Yes, it's great to see this come forward. It's always interesting reading the applicants that were received, who is recommended for approval and why, as well as those that are recommended for not approval and the reasons why. And it's great to see there are always well-articulated, clear reasons as to why people might not be successful. And that's really important for us to be aware of as councillors. Interestingly, it's only quite a small amount, really $66,000 we're talking about. It's quite a low contribution to the community. I see that there was $112,000 available, but whether we're not getting enough significant items... and twelve thousand available, but whether we're not getting enough significant items, applications that meet the criteria and provide merit to exhaust the full amount or not, I'm not sure, but great to see we have this money available to see who's been successful, and I support the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Hunter, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I just would like to draw council's attention to the, the application process, and that is, it's part of the community and cultural and creative streams to be funded as part of this round of grants. So those that have been recommended for approval are on pages one fifty-two and one fifty-three, and it sort of catches my eye that three of those projects are community orientated, and the others on page one fifty-three are cultural and creative. I've got no issue with being cultural and creative, but it just seems to me that some of these community projects that obviously have been not recommended, that they may fall outside the, the parameters of a community application. So let's hope that then the next round, there may be more community orientated applications, and of course, a consideration of having cultural and creative applications as well, but I'd like to think that next round of, of the applications, that there may be a better, well, that's my opinion, maybe a better balance between the community requests and all those of cultural and creative.
Thank you councillor James, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor Walker.
Thank you. I won't be voting against this, there are indeed some rippers amongst this round of applications, and, you know, some worthy ones that I think could, could probably made a case to be included as well. I make no comment about the rigor and the thorough process that goes into it, I'm sure it's robust and sound, but, and I guess my but is, what might work better in this situation is that we actually include ten minutes in a workshop before this comes out, because what happens is, it comes out in the agenda, comes out in the agenda, that's usually the first time that comes before us, and then it's up on the website, so there is a briefing process where, where questions can be asked, but by that stage, the train is well and truly down the track. So in deciding whether I support or courageously abstain, that is the reason that I think that things like grants should probably get as part of our job in reviewing what, what council's doing and authorising what's council's doing, that, that would be a more appropriate process for this to occur, rather than when documents are published up on a website and we have a couple of days before a meeting is to occur.
Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Goine, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what James said, he pretty much.
Councillor Walker.
Sorry. Councillor Walker said, he said quite clearly what I have been thinking at many meetings, and I often find it quite uncomfortable supporting these and being shown to support them, like, I'm not sure the public is aware that we don't actually have a say in the process to get to this point, other than supporting them once we get here, so apart from abstaining when we get to this point, or voting against, there's really not a lot of process that goes in for councillors, and I would also appreciate a workshop. However, it is really good to see some very community-minded programmes, I particularly love the Story Island project with the Clarence Plains, we often see this particular area missing out on funding, and I spent quite a lot of time in the area recently, and it's really nice to see something engaging the school students there, and of course, the board writers, you know, that's incredible initiative down my way, so, and the men shed, you know, as always, absolutely. So there are some doozies in here today, and I am happy to support, for the first time, I feel very comfortable supporting these, but I certainly would like to see some more engagement in the process, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goine, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder?
Yeah, yes, I just rise to the point councillor Goine makes, and there was a time when we had lengthy workshops over a long time, going through these things, where we had a committee of the councillors who would assess them and make recommendations, and then we would discuss them, and as soon as we came out, and we rarely disputed the councillors' recommendations anyway, but when we came to discuss them, and when we got them out there, we were getting feedback from the unsuccessful applicants that there'd been deals done, and that councillors, you know, favoured this project or favoured that project, and the current process deliberately arose from that, to the point of taking the politics out of the community submission and drafting it to the offices. So if you have concerns about any of them, what it does is create, yeah, we probably could have one workshop ahead of the agenda brief, which would give us an opportunity to question the officers about their recommendations, and, but that's as far as I would go, because anything else starts to get, you know, a little bit dodgy in the eyes of the public.
Thank you councillor Mulder, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Before I call on the deputy mayor, I'm going to also talk as a councillor on this item, not as a mayor, and just point out the very obvious matter, that this council, this iteration of council endorsed councils' grants and sponsorship policy in two thousand twenty-three, two years ago, we did this one year into our term, and we endorsed this policy for the reasons, some of the reasons touched on then by councillor Mulder. As we've, as we know from our report, sixteen applications were received, totaling some a hundred fifty-two thousand, nearly a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Three were deemed ineligible because of the criteria, and four were unsuccessful, leaving nine grants in front of us tonight, totaling over sixty-six thousand dollars. From my perspective, the staff go above and beyond, it is highly professional, and it is, they've been also proven in the past week to be very nimble, because one applicant who's been successful here was originally informed, but they were unsuccessful, and they got in contact, and that was then reviewed, and as a result, the CEO was able to, working with Ms Coe Burden and her team, make arrangements to, to ensure that that very small amount in the scheme of things was made available to that very worthy community group. So there are strict, strict criteria there for the granting of these public funds, but I think we'd all agree that the nine successful applicants are all extraordinarily worthy, and there's a reason why the policy was endorsed by this council, to ensure that it did take the politics out of it, and that nothing was, there could be no suggestion that anything was untoward. So deputy mayor, your right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank colleagues for their contribution and their feedbacks. I note, what I'm hearing is that there's robust and broad trust in the process that our officers go through, I've heard nothing to the contrary, which pleases me greatly. I think what I'm hearing is that some councillors may have liked just one step back in terms of seeing it a workshop prior to, I think that's probably a discussion for a different forum outside of this evening's recommendation, so I would encourage councillors to perhaps revisit that outside the chamber this evening, if they'd like to put forward some suggestions around those sorts of things, I'm sure they'd be listened to. So aside from that, I'm pleased to put forward the recommendation for those that were successful, and look forward to speaking to colleagues outside of this, this evening's discussion, perhaps around those other points that have been raised this evening, so seek colleagues' support.
Thank you, deputy mayor, I'll put the motion, which is a recommendation, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues, please invite councillor Kennedy and councillor Chong back in. Colleagues, we now move on to gender item eight point four point two, which is local government amendment, targeted reform bill two thousand twenty-five exposure draft, councillor Walker has circulated an amended motion, is there a second for councillor Walker's motion? Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Walker.
Thank you, this is called the targeted reform bill twenty twenty-five, I actually think when it comes specifically to one point, and there's a lot in this, but I'm really focusing on one in particular, it's not targeted, it's sweeping when it comes to the role of local government, and I'm not being melodramatic when I say this is actually an existential matter for councils to consider. And when we go through this, I'm trying to be fairly middle of the road about going, going with things, and, you know, you read point one of the role, which is now the role of council is to support and improve the wellbeing of the community, and there'll be points that we'll discuss around that. It's a huge step and an obligation to have councils playing their part, supporting, which does often lead to improvements, to actually legislating that your role is to improve. And I, I say that because the bulk of wellbeing sits well outside the envelope of local government. State and federal government, for example, have more levers, but in many ways, the majority of the influence on wellbeing lies with the individual, family and wider things. The bottom line is, government won't love you, government can't give you meaning. Government, for some people, people turn to politics to fill what might be a god-shaped hole in their heart of guilt, and that's a terrible idea. Councils do, I think, have a role to play in wellbeing, and I'm analog, so I probably often more sit comfortably in the space of public health, but by making it support and improving, that's a huge rod, and again, it's written very vaguely. So you then go through the four bullet points, and then the first one says harnessing and building on the unique strengths of the community. Well, okay, it's pretty vague, it's certainly expansive, and it's certainly open to interpretation, and more worryingly, reinterpretation. A new director of local government could come in and say, no, no, it actually means this. I think maybe what it's trying to express is actually well pointed out in point B, which is providing infrastructure and services that are effective, that to be effective require local approaches and services, and this is spot on, this is where you've all heard me go on and on again about councils being laboratories of democracy. We're not here to do cookie cutter approaches, different communities have different needs, have different aspirations, and the way point B is written is allowing for councils to ramp up and ramp down in certain areas and in certain services. Point C is the generic advocating for the, the community at regional and statewide level, so there's not really any, any problems with that, I wouldn't have thought. When we go on to point D, however, which is promoting the social, economic and environmental sustainability of the community, including but not limited to by mitigating and planning for climate change impacts, again, very poorly defined around promotion and what would sit within, you know, what is, what is social sustainability, that's certainly not spelled out. But boy, do we have a real role to play in the areas such as, you know, climate change, mitigation and adaption. I would like potentially this council to look at doing heat monitoring in some of the newer areas compared to some of the older areas in the peaks of summer, so that we can actually identify. That is the role that we have within things like climate, good, good planning, good design can make a ten degree difference to, to people's areas. Tree pathways or forest areas, you know, as walking, can make a huge difference, and again, we're coastal, we're vulnerable. So that is why I've suggested in our commentary that we should actually go to, point D is poorly defined and exposes council to the risk of unanticipated scope creep and increased compliance burden, but there is that opportunity to instead be more prescriptively focused on asset management, natural disaster resilience and climate change adaptation and mitigation. As I say, I've spent time on this, I've had some colleagues have extended conversations on this, because the role of council is existential, what is being proposed in this is sweeping, and again, it is not well defined, and it would be in the eyes of others further up the food chain than us to determine what that would mean, that poses a risk. People value the services that we provide, they want us to do them well and efficiently, seek your support.
Councillor Hunter.
Thank you councillor Walker for bringing this amended motion this evening, I didn't necessarily have any issues with the initial recommendation, but after listening to councillor Walker on Friday's briefing and with his amendment motion, I definitely agree with him, the reasons being, it isn't very prescriptive what council does, and we've all come here in our debates, making claims of what's in the act and what we're responsible for, because they are so open to interpretation. And I agree that it would be helpful to better define what the scope of council is, and I do believe you have attempted to do that here with your amended motion, particularly around wellbeing, I think we all agree that we do have some responsibility in that space, but what is that? It is really unclear, and I particularly like your comment around a prescriptive focus on asset management, natural disaster resilience, climate change, adaptation and mitigation, because I do believe those are all things council clearly can be responsible for and should be doing work in, in that space. I also like how you've aligned it with our strategic plan, strategy and delivery, sustainable growth, culture in place and wellbeing and belonging, so I'm very comfortable with your amended motion, and I will be supporting it this evening.
Thank you councillor Hunter, anyone else wishing to speak on this motion? Councillor Chong, please.
I had a lot of salt over this, over the weekend, and I absolutely understand the issues around scope creep and responsibilities being pushed down to council level from both federal and state governments sometimes, and how we should resist that perhaps as much as we are able to. However, I suppose for me, at the end of the day, council is no longer about roads and rubbish, it's no longer about those pure physical things that we always used to do, you know, the roads, rates and rubbish, that was inevitably the description that people talked about with council. For me, it's also about Dogs Day Out and the Jazz Festival, it's about vaccinations, it's about our tracks and trails, it's about the Christmas brunch where we support those in our community who have no one to share Christmas with, it's about all of those things as well, and I am concerned that if we go down this path, as per the amended motion, that we focus so much on the roads and the rates and the rubbish, that we lose sight of the other things that are also really important to our community. They don't only care about the roads, they care about all those other things as well.
Thank you councillor Chong, so are you foreshadowing that if this amended motion is unsuccessful, you will move for the recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you very much, councillor Mulder, please.
I share the concerns about scope creep, and it's important. What my main concern was, and I'm just trying to work out whether, I'll take some credit for the comment on the, on the, at Friday's briefing about the amendment, and thank them for that, this charter is an instrument of the minister and can be changed at will. So you get a minister in here who decides that, well, maybe you should build your own state highways, I will change it. You know, and to me, that's it, I'm unclear, so, but the way over that is to make this a disallowed instrument, so any minister's change to something as broad and as big and as impactful as the charter of a local government area, that needs to actually go to, go through the Houses of Parliament, not as a huge debate or as a piece of legislation, but it sits there. The moment you get that opportunity, then councils have an opportunity to lobby, lobby the parliamentarians to accept or reject and send the government back, no, 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 you know, we can't have the minister running the place, you know, like an executive president declaring an emergency and then just doing stuff. So that's, and that's the nature of executive directions, this is an executive direction. So I included the, I made a lot of effort to, and I thank the CEO and staff for making the change. So I included the, I made a lot of effort to, and I thank the CEO and staff for making the change, to make this a disallowable instrument. And I'm just wondering whether your amendment leaves that in there.
So the question.
The question is to the chair.
Question can be answered either in write a reply or as a question to the CEO. We'll take it that. Stop the clock, please, Miss Ellis. CEO, thank you.
I'm flying a little bit blind at the moment because I don't have it in front of me. Certainly, if the desire of council was to add the words of, about the disallowable instrument back in, we could do that. The words that you've got in front of me are the words that councillor Walker provided this morning and I've put those in unedited.
All right, so I'll just jump in here. Councillor Mulder, one moment, please. Are you happy with that change being inserted as the mover?
I am happy with that change being inserted.
Thank you. As the seconder, councillor Hunter, are you happy? Okay, are we all clear what's being proposed here if this motion, amended motion is successful? Councillor Mulder, please restart the clock. Miss Ellis.
Thank you for that. I was about to propose that amendment, but anyway, that's fine. So we now get back on to the issue about the welfare and the talk about the roads and things. I think, yes, we all agree we've gone along for that. But I think there needs to be some more clear definition of what we do. Certainly small programs like some of the things, certainly, you know, like vaccinations. The council has a role with the Department of Health. But to push that on to us and say, well, you know, the next round of flu vaccines is down to you guys. You know, you've got the resources, go and do it. Because the thing that bedevils Australian government, and we're seeing it now at the moment at all three levels, is the people with the responsibilities for the service delivery. There's a mismatch between that and access to the taxation base. We've got a very limited rates base. To be now foisting stuff on us when the federal government gets the bulk of the taxes, and might I say, they get the bulk of any commercial benefit that is flows from their money in the form of tax receipts and, you know, company tax and corporate tax and all the other taxes. So there's this continual push for those who with the capacity to collect the money to push their costs on to those with less capacity to tax the money. And if you like, this is almost like constitutional stuff. What is the sphere of local government? And to have that being able to be changed at the whim of a minister, to me, is about the most dangerous thing you can possibly do. The next thing you know, they'll be expecting us to run the hospital system under the health and wear system from the rate base because we have a responsibility for the health and welfare of the community. No, I don't think it'll ever go that far, but look at all these emergency clinics popping up all over the place. Several councils are now involved in aged care facilities with a huge impact upon their rate base and all the rest of it. So, you know, be careful, people, before you just hand a politician a chequebook and the capacity to make other people spend the money that's in that account.
Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I thank councillor Walker for the thought and effort that he's put into this. I do like a good definition and whenever I see something vague and open to interpretation, that does concern me. So I appreciate the drawing the attention to those things. I do note that this is only our feedback on the draft and we are one of 29 councils and I'm one of 12 councillors. So I wonder how much weight and time we should spend on this. But there's been many robust discussions in this chamber over the past seven years that I've been a councillor about the meaning of wellbeing. And some people see it through the prism of healthcare. Whereas some of us have been arguing quite strongly, as councillor Chong says, that wellbeing is much more about community, being well in the community, being part of the community, feeling safe and included and respected within your community. And many of the programs that councillor Chong mentioned go towards that. And many of the programs that we run to address inequity go to the wellbeing of the community. So I don't see anything in here that greatly concerns me about that missing out. But I think the wellbeing should be interpreted much more broadly than just as healthcare. And I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Warren. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. As we all know, local government plays a crucial role in the wellbeing and development of the community. And I think there's no doubt that the role of local governments has evolved and expanded significantly over time beyond the traditional purview of roads, rates and rubbish. And that being said, I'm sure that we all know many people in our community that are not particularly supportive of the idea of expanding the role of council beyond those traditional outputs, particularly without the allocation of resourcing from other levels of government. And I think the amendment put forward by councillor Walker attempts to raise concerns about the definition and as part of this consultation process that we're going through and the feedback that we're providing. And these concerns are highly relevant at this point in time. And they're not just confined to councillor Walker or this council or even this state. Because in fact, in November 2024, a report of the New South Wales Parliamentary Inquiry into the Ability of Councils to Fund Infrastructure and Services called for the New South Wales Government to identify opportunities to reduce cost shifting to local government. In July this year, according to a report commissioned by the Local Government Association of New South Wales, councils in New South Wales are now absorbing 1.5 billion in cost shifting from state and federal governments each year. In February 2025, the House of Representatives Standing Committee tabled an interim report into local government sustainability. And the interim report notes emerging themes and which include, and I quote, "Throughout the inquiry to date, the committee received substantial evidence through submissions and at public hearings on how local government financial sustainability and funding frameworks were being impacted by evolving infrastructure requirements, service delivery obligations and cost shifting," end quote. Now, as local government is an instrument of state legislation, it will be the state parliament that ultimately decides the role of local councils into the future. But, and I think it's, you know, fair to say that the existing legislation is already pretty broad and that local councils have always stood ready to work with state governments and federal governments. But the caveat on that expanding role and responsibility must need to be that councils have the resources that they need to serve their communities appropriately. I think generally speaking, we're pleased to work with other levels of government to address issues that matter to our communities. However, it's always been the delegation of responsibilities for services and infrastructure from other levels of government to councils without providing sufficient funding to meet those obligations that poses the greatest concerns. In other words, handballing responsibility and cost shifting. They're the biggest concerns to me rather than the broadness of the definition. It's the things that can come with it. So I think councillor Walker's amendments to the recommendation are a brad, expressing those same concerns that are being echoed by local councils across the country. And I hope that the state government will take these matters into consideration when it reflects on the role of local councils, albeit rural individuals. And for me, it's important that we can convey our willingness to collaborate, but also appropriately counterbalance those messages that our rate payers and our staff should not have to foot the bill for state and federal functions and services they didn't design and we aren't funded to deliver. It's vitally important that the core services that our communities need, want and deserve are not compromised by councils needing to pick up the bill on behalf of state or federal governments. And I think it's timely that we reiterate those messages, not in a negative way, but they're just a matter of fact. And they're the sorts of things that we are hearing all around the country right now. So I think it's very timely. I don't think it erodes the intention of the feedback that we're providing. And I thank councillor Walker for bringing forward the amendment and I'll be supporting the amended motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Going, please.
I too would like to thank councillor Walker for bringing this forward and amending the motion. I know how much time and depth he has put into this and it certainly, like councillor Hunter, made me rethink my initial, oh yeah, it's just another consultation of another consultation. And I really do think that even just the debate tonight around the table has proven how we do need descriptive roles because, you know, colleagues have just argued the importance around vaccinations. And yet 12 months ago in this place, we voted to not ask questions about the vaccinations that we find important to administer and said it was outside the scope of this council to ask questions about those. So I really think it is important that we do focus on things like the roads, rates and rubbish. And whilst our community probably would agree that they enjoy the benefits outside the scope of those things, I think they would probably like to see those three Rs be our priority, be funded and be at the top of their game before we expand our scope. So I seek colleague support.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, your write of reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the commentary that's come forward on this and the considered dialogue around the table. I'd note, Mayor, in relation to councillor Warren's point, that it is, the role of council is existential. So whilst this is something that might be a lower order thing, I really think it does matter that we get our ducks lined in a row when we're communicating and messaging. And I thank you for your commentary around that. What I would say too, in the space of wellbeing or public health, I've seen some nice hospitals in my time. I've worked in one, one classifies nice and probably half a dozen I wouldn't. Park hospitals, right? Hospitals are important, but the biggest uplift in public health, if you want to use that term for wellbeing, has been delivered by local governments and that's water and sanitation. Big, big public health uplift. What I would say, I guess, to the point, Mayor, that councillor Chong raised or those concerns is, I think that there should be some comfort around the actual first paragraph. Council holds concerns around some of the expanded roles. The central role of council should be framed to focus on service delivery. The insertion of appropriately before the word support as currently drafted would help set realistic expectations around the breadth and scope. So what we're asking for there is, you know, to be appropriately supporting wellbeing in community. We're still having a role, but we're putting a guardrail that it is not a forever open-ended, make your claim, have a go approach. There's still going to be Dog's Day Out. Got to say, Mayor, it was fantastic on the weekend. There's still going to be other events. This is still within our bailiwick. And again, it sits within that providing the infrastructure and services that to be effective require local approaches. Our local approaches is things like Dog's Day Out. I thank councillor Ritchie or deputy mayor Ritchie, who raised the issue of unfunded mandates. And this is really at the core of why we should be so concerned. Because the way that it's written with those five points is it's the opportunity to not just push everything to us, but to potentially flip the table at any time. Let's focus on what we do well and let's play our roles in ways that councils can do best. So I thank everybody for the debate. I seek your support and I hope we can put in a submission that may make the Department of Local Government and that director rethink the current approach.
Thank you councillor Walker. Well, I've put your amended motion with that other insertion regarding disallowable instruments. All those in favour? Those against? So carried. Moving now on to 9.1, notice a motion seen in the name of councillor James. Is there a seconder, please? Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And the reason for bringing this motion forward is that if you're observing the students leaving Rosney College at lunchtime, there's a cavalcade of them that are actually crossing the grassland to get to the intersection of Rosney Hill Road and Kangaroo Bay Drive. So they've got to trek across a large area of grasslands and in inclement weather, it really is very difficult for them to negotiate that, particularly as it is, they take the shortest route. And that's from the under, under the actual main area of the Rosney College adjacent to the Clarence District Cricket Club building. So this motion seeks an officer's report on the feasibility of a hard surface shared pathway adjacent to Clarence Cricket Club Oval from Rosney College to connect to the bitumen pathway near the lights. Already there are a number of bitumen paved or hard surface pathways within the Charles Hand Park. But this particular area is devoid of any, any construction or hard surface in that regard. So the motion is really to see whether it's feasible. And the officer's report may come back and say, well, look, we may need to do this in conjunction with Rosney College, although it's council land, and may come back with a different option. But this is merely seeking an officer's report on the feasibility of providing that hard surface pathway from Rosney College adjacent to the Clarence District Cricket Club building in a straight line, if you call it that, to the intersection of Rosney Hill Road and Kangaroo Bay Drive. I seek council's support.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Mulder.
Yes, roads, rates and rubbish at last. Or footpaths, I should add to that. I think this is a great idea. I just sort of, you know, just for what two goals worth, I think that we probably need to think about the footpath and where it runs in relation to the cricket ground. Because I know we've all got concerns about, or some have got concerns about cricket balls. And I think there's still a project on foot to build a horrible big black fence. No, hopefully not, to protect flying cricket balls. But I think if you ever pop down to South Melbourne of a weekend, you'll see there's huge areas on the south, in the, I forget the name of the place now, in that parklands there. And there's cricket match next to cricket match next to social cricket match and everyone's having a wonderful time. And I never hear reports of deaths or injury from flying cricket balls. So I think that's something we need to factor in when we're building those sorts of sports facilities. So I commend councillor James for picking up a grassroots community issue. Where are we going to pull out the grassroots and put in a gravel footpath?
Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was once a student at Rosney College and I believe that I was one of the, maybe the third year of the intake. They were still building parts of the building in the year that I started. And at the risk of outing myself, next year will be the 50th anniversary of me starting at Rosney College. So before some of you were born, I'm aware of that. I walked that route from Rosney College to those lights to go to Eastlands at lunchtime. Eastlands wasn't as big then as it is now, but it was still Eastlands. This has been a popular route for 50 years. Is it a priority is my question. Certainly any suggestion that the path should go anywhere other than as the crow flies means that students will ignore it and just go the shortest route between A and B. I don't think this is something that we should be spending money on if the officers have time to look at the feasibility. But I'm sure that there are places in our area, our municipality that are in greater need of a hard surface or a bitumen footpath than this well-worn route that has caused no great problems over the last more than 50 years. So I don't, I won't be supporting this.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Like councillor Warren, I'm also a former Rosney College student. And councillor James's motion actually has made me rethink my recollection of my time walking up and down across there to Eastlands, leaving school for the day, all those sorts of things. Because I actually thought there might have been a path there at some point previously. So I'm going to have to go back and look, but I may be wrong. I don't think there's anything wrong with having a look at whether it's possible, whether there's a partnership arrangement. I do agree that in terms of priorities, it might be certainly one that would be a bit lower on the list. I don't know if councils had any particular approaches from the college or feedback from students around, you know, their interest in such a path. I certainly probably would have liked one.
I certainly probably would have liked one if it wasn't there already when I was there. So I am going to go and dig out the old photos, but certainly have no objection to feeling out the feasibility of something like this and perhaps looking to see where it might be able to go and what level of interest there might be, and I thank councillor James for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor James for bringing this to our attention. I definitely see students taking this route all the time as well, so it is interesting. I fully support council putting a hard surface there, and gosh, if it's been used for 50 years, I'm surprised it hasn't been done already. However, asking officers to create a report on the feasibility requires time and resources, being money, and I think we already have enough on our plate for this financial year. So I would, won't be supporting this tonight, but I strongly encourage that we look at this for budgeting next year, to have a feasibility study and costing done as part of next year's financial plan.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Any other former Rosney College students? All right. Councillor James, your write of reply, please.
Yes, thank you. I seek council support.
Thank you. I'll put the notice standing in the name of councillor James, that is the shared pathway Rosney College at Kangaroo Bay Drive. All those in favour? Those against? So carried. Right, moving now on to item 10, councillor question times, question time rather, there are no questions on notice. 10.3 answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. 10.4 questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor, starting this evening with councillor Kennedy? Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong? Councillor Warren? Councillor Daco? Councillor Goine?
More time to prepare. In the Fluoridation Act 1968, 0.623 and 0.624 require notification if the fluoride levels exceed 1.5 milligrams per litre. It says that they have to notify varying levels of government, however, it does not mention council. Do we get notified if the fluoride levels exceed those?
Thank you, councillor Goine. Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. In my 18 years been here, I haven't received a notification, but otherwise I'd take it on notice because it may go to governance or something else.
Thank you. We'll engage with test water and have a response detailed in the minutes. Your second question, please.
So that also, reading the Fluoridation Act also piqued my interest. Section 13 states that elector polls relating to the works under the Fluoridation Act, that we must not hold an elector poll in relation to the addition of fluoride to the public water supply. Are there other topics that are off limits for council elector polls?
Thank you, councillor Goine. Sir Yeo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask for some clarification. Are you talking about elector polls generally under the Local Government Act? Yeah, I'm going to take that on notice. Thank you.
I'm sure we've all got some suggestions. Councillor Walker.
Thank you. My first question is, is the current asset management's team fully staffed or experience any workload difficulties?
Thank you, Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll take that one on notice. We've certainly got a large capital works programme, which we'll discuss with councils through the coming budget, and we try to prioritise as, as much as we can, as we need, but I'll, I'll talk to the CEO in terms of how we can inform councillors on where we're at at the moment.
Thank you. I think councillor Walker's suggesting he's going to be very generous next budget round, but councillor Walker, your second question, please.
If it, if it helps with my note, with my elected member requests, then they've probably got a strong ally. My second question relates to the committee structures. It's been some months since there was surveying of councillors, of staff and of membership itself. I'm just wondering where we are in the process of reviewing, potentially updating or amending, and that coming to a workshop for us.
Thank you, councillor Walker. CEO, please.
The question councillor Walker threw you, Mayor. Yes, we've done some work internally, but we've been focused on the strategic plan review, and our goal was to progress the strategic plan review and then, then re-engage with the structure, the committee structure issue once we had some clarity around the progress of the strategic plan, principally because the two are linked.
Thank you, Sir Yeo. Councillor James, do you have any questions this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. First question, please.
On the weekly briefing report of the 3rd of November on the Pipe Clay Lagoon coastal study, it refers to the, the, the timing of the coastal management plan at Pipe Clay Lagoon. And my question is, some years ago, we had a report done by Water Research Laboratory regarding a seawall cross-section for Pipe Clay Espinade, including reducing wave run-up onto the road, et cetera. So my question is, will the report from Water Research Laboratory be included or be part of the inclusion in the coastal management plan at Pipe Clay Lagoon?
Mr Graham, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So the coastal management plan is, has been undertaken by the same organisation, and they've provided us with a draft report. As advised through there, we are currently reviewing our coastal hazards policy, and then we'll come to council early next year in terms of whether, how that is currently looking in terms of contemporary standards, and then we'll be revisiting the two local coastal management plans, drafts we have received, which is the Roaches Beach and Pipe Clay Lagoon.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Is there a second question, councillor James?
Yes. A short time ago, we were provided with a, an update on the master, master plan for a number of projects, one of which was the Little Hara Beach. And that was listed fairly high up in the priority list. Given that there may be a delay in actually undertaking aspects of the Little, of Little Hara Beach master plan, is it intended to provide council with a revised list of those master plans to include, obviously Victoria Parade, that's one that's been well and truly listed as a priority, but is it intended to provide us with an update on that list of master plans so we can see?
Thank you, councillor James. I'll just remind councillors too, that there's a requirement under the main regulations that questions be succinct and to the point. CEO, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James. In answer to your question, we will conduct that review as we normally do as part of the budget process.
Councillor Hunter? Councillor Mulder? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors currently undertaking, as I understand it, a review of the arrangements around leased properties across the city. Does, is council able to provide a timeframe as when we might expect something to come to workshop for councillors in respect of that review?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. CEO, please.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll take that one on notice because the relevant officer is away tonight and I need to seek some advice.
Is there a second question, Deputy Mayor?
I do. As we head towards summer, I know council's been working with South Arm community around potential ownership of the pontoon transferring to council. I'm wondering if there's any progress on that and perhaps maybe some result before the summer really heats up.
Sir Yeo, Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Through you. So can I have that question again? Sorry about that.
Just seeking an update on the progress of the South Arm pontoon and whether council's been able to progress the ownership of that in advance of summer.
We've undertaken an inspection last week or the week before of the pontoon. It's in relatively good condition. There's a few things that need to be replaced in, in terms of, of the ladder, and also it's unlikely we're going to be able to find the, the anchor that's actually embedded somewhere in the sea there. So we need a new anchor to be installed, but we are making progress to see if we can get it in there this summer. Yep.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Well, I now know that with the end of item number 10, so moving on to item 11, closed meeting, I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Councillor Chong, second and councillor Warren, thank you. I'll put that motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So thank you to those members of the public who joined us in person this evening, and also those joining us via the live stream. Please, we'll see you again in three weeks' time. Thank you for your company this evening.